Everybody's waiting for me.
We're going to call a special meeting in order with General Lieutenant Fletch.
Great. So if you go.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And leave, uh, Corey, you're gonna leave the staff report?
Point of order, Mayor, can we do roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
On the way.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
All right, well, we're gonna go around and introduce everybody here. Dean, good afternoon, Dean Gross, City Council.
House for second half. And I'm Mark Kusamoto, also in the City Council, want to thank you for being here. My day job, I work for Atheon and make the systems that I hope that you all use and do well, thank you.
Hi, I'm Shulay Also, I'm the assistant for the City Council. I'll probably be by names and faces and you'll need to know the rest.
Thank you for coming, Steve Mendoza, City of Los Alamos Public Works Director and Community Development Director.
Good evening, I'm Corey Lakin, Recreation and Community Services Director.
Hello, I'm Brett Plumlee, City Manager, City of Los Alamos, and thank you for all being here tonight, appreciate it.
I'm Lieutenant Colonel Nathan Range, I'm the Deputy Commander for the Joint Forces Training Base.
I'm Lieutenant Colonel Gary Ayton, Director of Facilities and Infrastructure for the California Military Department.
I'm Captain Ernie Regley, Legal Advisor for JFPB.
Colonel John Lathrop, Deputy Commander of the California Army National Guard.
General Nate Reddicks, and I'm currently the Chief of Staff for Air Division for the California Air National Guard, and as of 1 April, in my understanding, I'll be the installation commander over at the base across the way.
Welcome, I'm Richard Murphy, the Mayor, and we're gonna start out with a short staff report to give the background of where we are today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. To provide a brief staff report, I believe most of you know the history of the pool, but in 1996, a sub-license agreement between the Military Department of the State of California and USA Water Polo was entered into for a 20-year term. Briefly, after a couple short years of usage and some problems that they ran into, in 1998, the City of Los Alamos got involved and a sub-license was developed for the, a joint license was developed between the City of Los Alamos, USA Water Polo, and the Joint Forces Training Base. The, since then, for nearly now 19 years, 18 years, the City of Los Alamos has been under obligation to maintain and operate the 50-meter pool. There's been a couple million dollars of investments besides an ongoing cost of anywhere between $350,000 and $450,000 worth of staff, labor, utility, payments, and several other, the cost of, excuse me, chemicals, and in order to maintain the pool, as well as painting the pool several times and rehabbing some of the facilities, the pool is what it is today. The current agreement expires February 29th of 2016, and after several meetings between the Joint Forces Training Base and the City of Los Alamos staff, we are here today to discuss the proposed new lease agreement that the base has provided to the city to discuss. Currently, the city pays anywhere between $103,000 to $155,000 in utility costs, and that's all that the city currently pays to the Joint Forces Training Base and to the military. Under the newly proposed agreement, the, there are several other expenses, a one-time expense for the license fee of $2,500, resource management fee of about $16,000, environmental compliance fee of $12,000, sustainment costs of $5,000, lease of the land for about $97,000, and military department administrative costs about $35,000, totaling in the first year about $168,000 fees in addition to the utility costs. These are all currently non-budgeted items that the city does not currently pay. As you know, the pool being built in the, according to the blueprints that we have, built in the early '40s, the, it's an old pool and an old facility, and the city has done its best to maintain it, again with the hope, with the help of USA Water Polo, the Aquatics Foundation, several others, early on to rehab the facility, and in order to continue maintaining it, another couple hundred thousand dollars is being recommended to spend in the next few years, and then kind of a future wish list, probably another half a million dollars or so to, to further enhance and provide the pool. We've got several user groups that utilize the facility, from age group water polo and swim clubs, to gold and silver medalist Greta Anderson, who's won her gold, I believe, in 1950, she teaches swim lessons, all the way to the gold medal winning, reigning gold medal champions, USA Women's Water Polo that works out there, in addition to probably another 200,000 individuals from the local community that use it for swim lessons to be water safe, as well as for recreational swimming. The staff provided some recommendations on a timeline going forward. Our hope is, is that we can, if we do not have a new lease agreement in place prior to then, that we can at least hope to extend the current MOA in order to allow the city to, and the user groups, to seek alternative locations, and allow USA Water Polo to continue their training for the Olympics that are scheduled for August of 2016. And again, with that, currently, our current fiscal budget is about $330,000 on the expenditure side, about $350,000 on the revenue side. So as you can see, the utilities is approximately 40% of our entire expenditure budget for the, for the pool. Under the terms of the new lease agreement, the lease of an additional $167,000, $168,000 annually, the city would be asked to pay approximately $301,000, projecting nearly $60,000 of the $505,000 expenditure budget. Again, the, the utility costs, as well as the proposed lease agreement, are attached, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Any questions before we get to this? I apologize, we're gonna get to a copy of the staff report, in fact, I already had one, the book was gone out to a couple days ago, but we'll get you to, get you on to see how the numbers in front of you. Just, you know, just to summarize really where we are today, we've had a long, great partnership with the base from in the early '60s when a general decided he was just gonna build a baseball field, and it's become the little league of Los Alamos, and so for, since I think '65, we've had an ongoing relationship where we, you've graciously allowed us to use the property, and the pool, the pool now is, unfortunately, it's in a state of needing repairs, I won't say disrepair, but it definitely needs some updates, and we're looking, we're looking at about $200,000 immediately, and another $600,000 longer in the next couple of years to fix everything that really needs to be done over there. We, as a council, we've been holding off till, till we can sign a lease, and as we, and I should congratulate both Colonel Range and Captain Regley, that they, we learned a lot on the race on the base, that, you know, the relationship, I guess, between the military and a civilian use is changing, I think is a fair statement, and that things that we've done for years, basically, aren't, just aren't allowed anymore, so it's, we're having to relook at, at our relationship, I guess it's becoming more formalized in a way, which isn't always good, but, so I know we're, the rules are changing a little bit, I guess, on this, as, as we go forward, but, you know, I don't know if you got to hear, but in, within two weeks of the race on the base, a bunch of issues came up that were able to get resolved, and it was, it all looked smooth on race day, but the two weeks up, I guarantee you, were a lot of phone calls and a lot of brain power going into how are we gonna have this happen, and it was, as you heard, was, you know, our biggest one, most successful one ever. You know, I feel like you guys are our colleagues, so we're just gonna try and be as blunt as we can, tell you what we need to do, and the basic problem is that we, we're like a break-even city, you know, and we, we take in about $13 million, we spend $13 million. Where, if, if the, if the expenses that are outlined here, the $167,000 a year are imposed upon us, we're really gonna have to look if we can keep the pool open. You know, we are, right now, Brett, I think we're about $300,000 short on, on balancing the budget anyway, before this item, and then we also have, as I said, the $200,000 of pool repairs that will have to be accounted for. Those numbers right?
Are they in here?
Yes.
Sir?
Yeah, they're.
Okay, we'll, we'll get a digital copy sent to us, I hope.
Page, yes, try and get your manual copy now, too, but on page four, it shows the repairs, and page three is our proposed, proposed charges. So, you know, it is, it is our goal to use the pool, Corey, maybe you could tell us a little bit about the numbers of people who use the pool, I think close to a quarter million of people last year.
Correct, our, our attendance at the pool is, is about, about 250,000 people annually that come in to utilize it, again, anywhere from as young as three and four months old, all the way up to in their 90s, swim lessons, recreational swimming, again, competitive water polo, from kids all the way to the Olympics, we've got master swim teams and age group water polo teams, age group swim teams, the high school works out there, both their swim and water polo team, and then we have a full gamut of recreational classes as well.
So, I mean, it is used by all facets of the community. Would any of my colleagues like to make any comments going forward? Do you?
We've been, uh, just engaged with the base for a long time, and we've had probably easily two decades worth of relationship building, as we've had with commanders come and go, it's kind of like.
Yeah.
Kind of like starting over each time, and just when we think everybody is on the same page, and they're face to face, new people come in, the same can happen on our side.
Sure.
It has happened with our city management staff. We're under the impression that's come to us that there's a major utility utilization program going on, a solar farm that's gonna be built there at the base, it's gonna be...
It's, it's being discussed, we are probably nowhere near having an answer to anybody, whether it's the city.
It depends on who we talk to. I know that the weapons station, CO Beach, is starting with their program, they're out on their EIR right now in the first phase, but, but our biggest cost utility-wise is power.
Right.
And it makes good sense that if the solar farm does occur, that, that would be a good option for us to be buying the power through the base, and that would reduce a great deal of the expense that we have, as it relates to the pool. I keep saying that the pool is a 70-year-old person, which makes me feel real good, because I guess I was born at that particular point in time, but regardless of that, it's hard to maintain.
Sure.
It was not state-of-the-art built at that time, when you look at stadiums around the country, they're trying to be rebuilt and redone and re-engineered, so, you know, the life expectancy, long range with the pool isn't probably the best, but we need some time to understand that, and the, and the main purpose from the council pulled back from the repairs this year because with only a year and a half, actually it's less than that now, before a new contract is in place, we're hesitant to want to spend money.
Sure.
On something.
And, and that's reasonable.
And we're not gonna be potentially controlless, so, you know, the purpose of all of the discussion today is to sit down and, and see what can be done, and I don't think any of us are expecting answers.
No.
Today, but to kind of outline what the problems are in the use and where we can go. Corey mentioned in one of his staff reports that about 20% of the usage of the pool is military, and the staff on the base and, and the tenants on the base have an opportunity to use it, is, am I correct there?
It's 20% of our lap swimmers, correct.
Okay. It's one of those things that I think.
Is that, I mean, is that members and families, or?
The lap swimmers is typically adults.
Okay.
We do get some kids, but typically adults.
You're saying it's 20%?
It's about 20% of our lap swimmers, and then that, those are just the daily users, we're open for lap swimming usually five to seven days a week, and then several of the units do utilize it for, for different types of trainings as well.
Okay. Okay, because we, we weren't showing those sorts of numbers either, so.
Well, it is the lap swimmers, it's not the recreational use, so I'm not sure what the percentage of lap swimmers are of your entire 250K, but it's, it's not gonna be...
No, it's probably about 10,000 lap swimmers a, a, in a given year, and about 2,000 of them or so is military.
Okay, great.
Can I ask that, do you track that, I mean, are they, are they, having them sign in, the military members sign in?
Yes.
So that you can verify that, you know, someone's not just showing you something and, and...
Okay. We're not experts on military IDs, we've had that conversation.
Yeah, we...
As long as they show us an ID that looks legitimate, we let them swim for free.
Yeah, but, and so we're, we're making sure that gets tightened up, your lifeguards there have a military ID example, so that they know what they're looking for, so that people get in with a legitimate military ID. Do you have the records that go back quite a ways, I mean, do you have?
I can look and see what we've got as far as, but we do keep a pretty decent history.
Okay.
It's important to us, but, you know, obviously, it's not gonna get to the meat of the discussions that we're talking about as far as to the costs that we're presenting. I mean, the tip for tat, we, this is news to us, but obviously, we're more interested in what it is that's causing you the problem, causing you the angst, obviously, costs have gone up, but I'm not gonna sit here, because you all know that, you run businesses, you run the city, and we all know that the costs have gone up. From what I'm hearing, you know, we need maybe go back and take a look at how our costs were derived and the information that we provided to you, and I can say that because I'm the new guy in the chair, and some of those costs, I haven't seen how they were derived, so I can tell you that we will certainly do that. I wish I could make a promise to you that they're gonna drop, but I can tell you that we'll go back, dig in a little bit and see, and, and so I guess that piece of it will be reviewed, and the final word isn't in on that, can we leave it at that?
Again, I think the answer really is, is that it's a, it's a community-wide asset.
I, I, I agree with you on that.
Not just Los Alamos, it's for all of the communities that are around the base.
Sure.
That do things, and there's a, for the base, and really for the city, the same thing, there's a definite public relations aspect that we can't measure when the women's water polo team competes internationally, and as they did this last time in England, come back with a gold medal. It, it means a lot from that standpoint, we've honored them here, I'm not sure whether the, the base has done something individually in that same regard, but there's, there's a definite marketing aspect for everybody in that regard, plus there's been, is it NC2A tournaments that have been held there, the high school competitions, the end of the, end of the season for water polo are, are held there for the CIF, so there's, it's a very broad brush from the standpoint, and, and we're fortunate that, that the pool has developed in a way that it's able to service the community, because prior to the time that the city took it over, it was in such a state of disrepair that it wouldn't be there today if groups hadn't come together from the standpoint of the county came in on it, we had a local philanthropist that came in and, and donated money to it, and it's, it's an important asset.
I understand.
For everybody.
You charge no money for people to use the pool?
We, for military?
No, no, you're...
The folks that do...
200,000 people use the pool every year, they don't pay?
They do.
They do pay.
That's why we're able to break even.
That's how you're turning the costs around, to take care of the investment costs, and you said you have 50,000, 50,000 per month for...
We're about 250,000 per year.
Per year. And that's just generalized maintenance?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, some months, and obviously with the race on the base, you know, we had several thousand that are inside the walls of the pool and competing in the pool, we have one of the largest age group water polo tournaments that's hosted at our facility, also in February, so February's a very big month for us, so some months it'll be, you know, tens of thousands and some months less, summertime usually is, is more crowded than when we have tournaments.
Okay.
The operating, really, the user groups are being charged, and the revenue that's coming in is covering the operating costs, it's not setting aside for capital at this point, so we have, you know, we have the existing operating costs that we're able to cover, been able to cover, but when it comes to the repairs and ongoing repairs, we need to be able to provide for those, too, that are, you know, we've got a list of short-term and long-term repairs that need to be done on a 70-year-old pool.
So what does the average person pay, pay to use the pool?
It, it depends on the program, you know, for, for swimming lessons, it's anywhere between 45 to $80, and then our user groups that have hundreds of kids come in, they pay an hourly fee to, to utilize the pool. And again, we basically arrived at those numbers to basically have the facility be offset, so we can pay our utility costs and pay for our staffing and that sort of thing.
Can you clarify the 45, though, is that to the city, or is it to private instructors?
Uh, to the city, all the road, the, the city...
Over a period of time, several weeks?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so it's not...
It's like $45 for nine, 30-minute lessons, correct.
But the takeaway is that the revenue generated is the operational costs only, but not sustain costs.
More to show you the comments?
Yeah, I do have a question, pardon my, my ignorance on this, but what has changed? I think Councilmember Gross had mentioned there's a change in the way that you have to assess these fees, is that, is that kinda, as I understand this conversation, what, what changed from last year?
I'll have to defer to the attorney, but...
Okay.
In short, our joint ethics regulations are changing and, and are, with time, you know, we don't, what, what might have been acceptable 15 years ago to have a conference in downtown Long Beach is no longer viewed acceptable, because we're not gonna spend that kind of money, so our regulations are adapting over time in the Army, and I'm fielding that question somewhat generically, because I wouldn't expect General Reddick to be read in on Army regulation, but under the joint regulations...
It's the same thing on the air, so.
Yeah.
I mean, every, every military service right now...
Relooking.
Obviously being looked at on the outside.
If I may, just for the record, do we need to announce that the city attorney is on the speakerphone listening to us, so everybody's...
I was asked to announce.
Okay, well, we raise, you can see your attorney.
Hers is here, twice as good.
You know, philosophically, there are a number of tenants that are at the base, and the base has operated over the years in a handshake-type relationship, and we recognize that that's changing. Probably the first real indication was the Marine unit that had been at the base the longest, last year raised an issue with the commander then, with the commander then, who was Lieutenant Colonel Russell, and Mayhew, I think, was her right hand at that particular point, and the troops that were there wanted to stay there, but they were advised that there was nothing they could do, there was nothing that the base could do for some of their issues, had mold, they had a leaky roof, they had a, a number of things, and they believed that they were spending 150,000 a year in lease to the base, in payments to the base, and once Brigadier General Jones got wind of it and had an opportunity to get with the Marines, it was discovered that the only thing they were paying for was utilities, and the Marine Command at that particular point decided that they owned property up in Pico Rivera, an armory, and then rather than continuing to cause the issues that they were thinking of, they opted to move.
Sure.
And so they lose, the base loses the relationship, loses the jointness with what we're talking about community-wise in terms of partnerships, in terms of support, it troubles me that these kinds of things occur, recognizing again that there's been changes, but if we wind up driving off all of the tenants that are there...
I think you can avoid the, you know, the unfortunate end result of driving them off, if we want to use that term, just by opening up the dialogue and communication.
I agree.
And I think, you know, when the tag and I, and General Baldwin and I discussed some of, some of the issues regarding the base, one of the things was to make sure that we could dialogue and we could discuss, and I'm, we're talking about discussions with everything on the table.
Right.
Okay, so I, I think we're, you know, it's not a long time before the lease is up, but there's time here to have some discussions and maybe get some innovative ways of figuring out how to handle these, these additional costs that obviously, you know, exist, so I, I don't think we're at the drive-off mode, you're, Major General Baldwin is not interested at all in driving people away from the base.
And I didn't mean to say that was where we were.
What we want to do is bring people along the base and understand that you're a partner out here for that.
And I'm, and I've watched other tenants, in fact, there's a couple currently that are in that mode where they're talking, they're going to, and I don't know how far that has gone up the chain or not, but it's one of the things that we really need to have the dialogue, and, and I'm grateful that General Baldwin has, has recognized that and, and wants to see that change and occur, so I, I'm delighted, frankly, that we have this opportunity, I'm delighted that we have the time, and that we can sit back and take a look at it. The city manager and the Community Development Director myself, as you, I believe, know, went up to a conference called Installation Innovations up in Monterey, and one of the things that was very telling up there was the, the method of relationships changing, and a lot, and a lot of it was Air Force this time, there was a lot of Air Force representation at that conference. at that conference, is in-kind services.
Yes.
And when we get off onto the other discussion on the agenda as well, that's again something worth exploring and maybe something that we need to...
Well, in-kind services is certainly some of the ways that Air Force has maybe skinned the cat on some of their problems. But it requires, you know, base support agreements and everything else that's reviewed on an annual basis and try to keep up with costs and understand in-kind is always in-kind and equal.
Right.
And that's really where in-kind comes into play.
Understood.
And maybe that will be part of the solution as we look at this.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment, just to kind of bring home the community involvement and put a couple faces on the two hundred thousand users. Both my boys became water safe at the pool there. By them taking the lessons, they watched the water polo teams that were practicing. I remember one of their highlights was the guys were holding five-gallon water jugs over their heads while treading water, and that got them interested in water polo. And then in turn, went to the high school and played water polo and swim using the base pool because the school is quite a large program. So, they rented the base pool for the high school aquatics program. And to complete the cycle, my seventeen-year-old last year became water safety, water instructor certified and lifeguard certified and now became a taxpayer employee at the base pool. So, that's the face of the community and that base pool and the base is just as much as our community, as our local parks, our high school, our restaurants and everything else. And we'd like to keep that seamless, just like any one of our other facilities are.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the other item. Okay. Brett, why don't you go ahead and introduce the civic center relocation ad hoc recommendations?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council and everyone here with us today. We have on the agenda, we moved it on to this workshop so that we could talk about it at the same time while the military is here with us, talk about the pool. And then we've had an ad hoc committee made up of Councilmember Gross and Councilmember Kusamoto that's worked with staff to develop a needs assessment for basically our civic center facilities and a spreadsheet that our community development director, Public Works Director, Stephen Mendoza, put it together. And we did a needs analysis of all the departments and have included it in the staff report today. We want to introduce the ad hoc committee and see if Councilmember Gross and Councilmember Kusamoto want to talk about this and kind of lead us into this next item.
Let me give you some background. When I was on the council back in two thousand and six, actually two thousand and seven period, this was bottom at that particular time, and that was when Brigadier General, although he wasn't brigadier at that time, Combs was here. And one of the things that concerned me was the city hall facilities, our aging. Staff is coming to us with requests to fix this, change that, replace this, and we're sitting in a facility that's aging rapidly. Adjacent to us is a nine-acre parcel that is owned by what was then called Supermedia, which was a kind of an online Yellow Pages-type organization. It was originally GTE Yellow Pages and has gone through several iterations in the process. That parcel of property has been up for sale and was recently purchased by Lincoln Properties. And they still have a lease with Supermedia for another few months. One of the concerns that I had was if that sells, we want this to sell with it. It hasn't happened. We've got roughly four acres combined, there's about thirteen and a half acres. It's on a piece of property that gets sixty thousand cars a day going up in Alcatela at the six oh five freeway. It's two hundred thousand cars a day. It's the last remaining piece of property in the city that would potentially have freeway signage and isn't generating any sales tax. It's generating minimal from the standpoint of property tax to the city. And we desperately need new sales tax resources. We desperately need services for our community. We had a developer come in who put in a bid and went into escrow on the property and wanted to build about twelve hundred townhomes. It's not zoned for that purpose, but he thought it was great that we could bring in another fourteen thousand people or another fourteen hundred people. And as I explained to him, we've got one grocery store in the town and three gas stations. We don't need more people. We need services and sources for the folks that are here. So, last year's budget came up and there was about two or three hundred thousand dollars worth of additional repairs. I spoke to the city manager and I said, "You don't have my support." And he said, "All I'm hearing from is you." I said, "Then let's agendize it." The whole council then talked about it and the end result was, yes, let's put a for-sale sign out here, let's try to market this place and get rid of it. That's one issue, and that's moving forward. And that's part of where this process came through in terms of developing a needs assessment from the standpoint of the city facilities. The second part of it was where will we go? And staff identified thirteen sites in the city where the city facilities could potentially move to. One of those sites was the Joint Forces Training Base. And in fact, that's the only site where the entire civic center complex can move in total. Otherwise, we're winding up splitting things all over from the standpoint of our police headquarters, public works, community development, the public service aspect, business licenses and things like that that the public comes to know us for. Back in two thousand and seven, we developed a series of plans that are on the table there in front of you that show concept of locating over on the base where the Navy housing was located. Fortunately, this month, the last of the Navy housing went down.
Yes.
And in dialogue with the different commanders over this period of time, I've heard everything from close combat facilities to we need parking space, we need staging space for equipment. And I recognize all of that. And my whole goal was is to keep our interest in that piece of property, approximately eight acres, although I think staff has said it may be larger than ten acres. It's, I think, a total of thirty...
I think it's about ten when you superimpose it onto our maps. I had our design engineers take your schematic and put it on there.
There is a superimposed one that's there. That's the first listing.
And it accounts, it would account for a buffer that we wouldn't consider usable, I guess, to the base. So, that's where you may get a little bit more than eight acres in there.
Understand.
And maybe that buffer isn't even necessary. I don't know.
So, the dialogue has continued. And earlier this year or later, the latter part of last year, some of the dialogue continued to increase. And interest from the standpoint of the base came back and said, "We're not going to get money for people. It looks like we're going to get some funding for things, projects. Would the city be interested in moving the police department over as part of this complex?" And I responded back, "Yes, that's part of what we want to do, is to move the whole civic center campus over there." And so, the discussion related to right at the entrance is the ball fields. And could the ball fields be relocated over toward where Little Cottonwood Park is located, keeping the recreation side of things over there? Well, they're a tenant on the base, and I don't know what that relationship is, and I don't want to open up that can of worms at this particular point either. I'm sure it'll happen as time progresses here. But that made sense. And putting the police department right at the entry creates a visibility standpoint of law enforcement support. It would leave access to the base. One of the things that was discussed was would the PD consider patrolling the base because there's limited military police at the present time? All of that stuff is on the table and part of the discussion and would be something that I think the city is amenable to. The ability to merge some of our public work stuff with things that occur on the base, much like they've done up at the Presidio in that process. A lot of this stuff makes sense from the standpoint of a joint-use type arrangement. And we're not ready at this particular point to sit down. We've still not sold this facility, although the one next door has been sold. But the potential still exists and we're still pursuing that. So, part of what Councilmember Kusamoto and I did was to meet with city staff through the community development director and assess what the needs of the various departments are right now. Everything is currently here. And part of the direction at that point was to not look at moving today over there for tomorrow, was to look more about a twenty twenty-five, a twenty thirty, a twenty fifty type arrangement so that we didn't get over there and suddenly find we're out of room. Not to pad it to the extent, but to realize the city's going to expand. Rossmore is an unincorporated community adjacent to us, and LAFCO, the Local Area Formation Committee, has put them in our sphere of influence, meaning that if they were to merge with the city, they think merging with Los Alamos makes better sense. It's the same zip code, it's the same school district as Los Alamos. That could add ten thousand more people to our sphere here from the standpoint. We're not suggesting that happens, but it's an issue that's out there that at some point in time would need to be considered. So, accessibility is important for those folks over there. If they need a building permit, they have to go all the way to Santa Ana, to the county seat, in order to be able to get a building permit, to get a business license, to do anything relative to their community, nothing happens here. Our police department being situated where it is provides mutual aid to them and will respond to calls to them, but there's nothing in the immediate future considering any of that type of thing. But we need to look long range at what we're actually going to need. So, the staff has put together, and I believe it's part of the report that they gave, put together what the assessment is from the standpoint of space. The drawings that were done were hypothetical, and there's four different versions or five different versions plus an overlay. And it's hypothetical from the standpoint that it's just, here's an idea.
Sure.
We've come up with the need, Stephen, what was the total, the total square footage?
...needed would be eighty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four, and that excludes any mention of a fire station?
Okay. Yeah, let me finish one more point here. One of the things that came to light in November was the fire service. And General Baldwin threw that out in a meeting that I had with him. And so, we've begun some dialogue with the Orange County Fire Authority, which provides fire services for the city. And is there a potential for the station that's currently located over on Green Street to move into this complex as well and provide services for the base in the same process? So, there's a whole gamut of thinking, wishing, dreaming, idealizing in the process of what could be if we can all sit down and work collaboratively in the process to figure out what becomes win-win in the long range. And so, I'll stop at this particular point and let my colleague, Karen, jump in here.
Okay, and thank you, Councilmember Gross. I'll just say as part of the ad hoc subcommittee on this matter, I'm not as ambitious as my colleague here. And I guess it would be, I think, my understanding is that we're not really putting a for-sale sign out there yet. We're beginning that process to see what will it take to put a for-sale sign out there. And the first step would be what do we really need in terms of square footage and then brick-and-mortar type facilities? And I think we've covered a lot in our part of the ad hoc, but we bring it back to the council, have it be reviewed by the council and see what the next steps are. But certainly, I think, in working with the base and with the armed services, that was part of the step of city manager, community development director and Councilmember Gross going to Monterey for that conference is certainly one of those pieces of it. And, you know, again, in partnership, mutually beneficial, in-kind, all that, I think, will have to be on the table. And, you know, we are taking those steps to figure out how to do all that because, you know, this is going to be a very expensive proposition. So, it's something that's going to be longer range, but I think it's going to be win-win for everybody is, or it's not going to work. But certainly, I think for this parcel here in conjunction with the next-door property makes sense, but we have to be able to get there. If we can't get there, then I don't think we can really realistically move. But certainly, we want to work in partnership with the base, you know, as far as, you know, certainly revenue neutral, right, at that? And then can we share services and be mutually beneficial? So, I think there's a lot of things we can do in synergy, and that's what I'd look forward to. But part of our challenge would be bring it back to council. Can we go find the funds to do what we need to do and partner with the base? So, you know, I'm glad you're here. We're going to work with you. We've got some very, you know, involved council members here that are working this thing, and I'm very happy to support it whichever way I can. But, you know, we want to work with you. That's, you know...
And I think General Baldwin has indicated the willingness that it needs to be a partnership. He used similar language as far as it being a win-win.
Yeah.
We certainly, we don't want to be in a situation where we're losing. Okay, if you want to use that term as kind of a negative term when you're talking about partnerships...
Right, it can't be a cost burden on you.
No, it can't be a cost burden.
We understand with the budget at the federal level, sequestration has happened and certainly...
And part of what we're seeing right now is based on a lot of things tightening up everywhere. Okay, so getting to the bottom line, the true bottom line on governmental spending, that's what we're really talking about. And it affects everything that we do, things that maybe we didn't pay close attention to in some areas. We are having to make sure we pay close attention to now because every dime counts. Okay, so, yeah.
And that's how, you know, we in the city, every dime counts as well. So, we understand that completely. Thank you.
No, we're, I think we're on the same track with that. I know that's where I am, that's where General Baldwin is, and we certainly will look at it that way.
I just want to say also, as Councilmember Gross talked about the conference, that he and Mr. Mendoza and I attended this last week in Monterey, just very educational for us, very inspirational in terms of learning about the services that we think we may be able to at least brainstorm with the base. Sit down, we want to sit down with you as a group and determine what services you provide and where the city might be able to help with that so that it is a win-win. So that if there's a way to save the base money and help from federal cuts...
Sure.
We can help do that and make the city whole at the same time. So, that's the idea and the theme, and we've learned a lot, and we want to share everything that we've learned.
I think if we go forward with that theme, it'll work. We'll see what happens as we get down the road, but that's what it's going to take, is collaboration, so...
Yeah, that's very encouraging. Very encouraging you guys are here at the table with us tonight, and we really appreciate it very much. We also wanted the needs assessment that we have, we wanted to get direction from the council to bless it as a whole from...
I had one question, something that Councilmember Gross said on the timeline. Would you run that timeline by me again? You indicated as far as to when things, when you see this vision moving along or...
I think, I think we, I'm more optimistic than my colleague.
That's what he just said.
But, you know, I'll be, let me answer it from my time. I mean, it depends on what we do here as a body in terms of do we accept this report? And then the next step would be my challenge to the council here, we would, I believe, a point of ad hoc, is how do we go get the money? How do we size up what the sting costs? So, we have to kind of look at all that in place. And so, it could happen sooner if we can be aggressive. It might take a little longer in terms of time.
You're looking at ten, twenty years? Is that what I heard you say?
I didn't say that. No, no. What Councilman Gross, I understood him to say was the planning is long-term to adapt to a city that grows over the next twenty-five to fifty years. So, is the eighty-three thousand square feet that you address, is that encompassing both the civic center and the government offices, or is it just the government offices?
It includes city management and administration, planning and building, police department, recreation, public works and common area. All of our facilities that we currently have now, we feel with our general plan build-out of twenty years, that would meet our twenty-year objective. It doesn't meet an expansion objective, but it does meet our twenty-year objective. It doesn't meet an expansion objective, but it does meet our 20-year objective.
And the other part to kind of put some, put some closure on it, these buildings weren't for sale until just recently. And they've gone through a series where the landowner, which is in Texas, wanted them off his books. And so they sold. We weren't ready at this particular point, but if this full 13 acres was in play, the potential to get somebody like a Fries, a Living Spaces, someplace that has large dollar volume, makes sense. Fries needs 12 acres. This is 13 and a half. There's already a freeway on and off ramp. There's a signal. So our biggest issue and I'll counter with, I do think the for-sale sign's out there. We get the right buyer that comes in and says, "I want to do this." If the landlord now that owns the property next door comes in with something, albeit a hotel, whatever makes sense says, "Yeah, we want your acreage," and we're able to sell it, then all of a sudden, we could be a 30-day escrow trying to find someplace. That's why thinking this process through is important. Will it happen? No, in the next two or three years, probably not. However, long-range thinking, we need to be seeing, is this something that can work? Can it be done in stages if that's what's needed, based again on the standpoint of what is needed for the base? Let me throw one other component out there because at this conference, they talked about a section that the, was added to federal legislation, Section 331, which put together funding for these types of things working from the standpoint of communities doing in-kind stuff, working together. We have a congressman that just took over this district three years ago. And I've met with the congressman individually on several occasions and two years ago, when I met with him in his first term, I told him, I said, "Keep a number in the back of your head." I said, "25 million. That's what I'm looking for from you." They don't do pork like they do, and he'll probably, if he sees this, be angry that I'm saying something in public. However, he kind of smiled at me and I said, "The runways at Joint Forces Training Base need to be replaced. They need to be upgraded." And it's projected that it's going to be about 25 million. So last December, we met again and I said...
Probably every year though.
And I said to him, "How you doing on my 25 million?" And he smiled. He got appropriations in this last budget for Starbase, which had been removed from the federal budget. He not only got it put back in, he got five million more put in to help Starbase at JFDB. He's very engaged in that and he's also watching Sunburst, which is another community asset that I don't think any of us want to see changed or go away. He has that potential in the process and at some stage in this thing, we may need to reach out to them.
And that's the collaboration that we're talking about.
Exactly.
But it goes across all of the various functional parts of government.
And I understand on the 25 million, I'm pushing him saying, you know, keep, if you see it, you snap it right now.
And I know nothing about it.
I understand. However, he sent me an email about a month and a half ago and said, "You'll be pleased to know I've met with Adjutant General Baldwin, he's a former state senator, to talk about your runways."
Yes.
And so you guys have to make the ask.
Yes.
But at the same time, we as electeds are also pushing in the same direction. So there's part of where that relationship exists, whether it's, you know, our state delegation, whether it's the county delegation. The county put in money to the pool when that was all done and helped us in that regard. So it's beholden on us to keep this going. When it actually snaps and says it's got to be done, I don't think any of us know. It's speculation.
Yeah.
But much as we haven't had, I've been talking about it, what would really help is to have the military assign a couple of people that could help work with us in that particular process and keep this thing moving forward so that you're part, you're at the table with us. And as things come up, whether it's the space study, the allocation, whether it's moving the entire plant further east, further west, things of that nature. One of the things that I mentioned to Lieutenant Colonel Range was, you know, on security, when your guy's out patrolling and they don't get a chance to get out and do that as much, but if they're out patrolling, they pick up the radio and talk on it, who are they talking to? We're part of a joint powers authority for police communications and the city of Seal Beach, the city of Los Alamos and the city of Cypress are all in on that communication. I'm on that board. And I brought that up recently is, we might have somebody else that would be interested in potentially partnering in the process. They provide communications for the marine, Parks and Recreation Marine Services as well. So they don't do just the police. But that's a whole nother thought that we hadn't looked at. So learning what some of your concerns, issues and challenges are might have some potential from the standpoint of how we could address them and make them work. So I'll stop at that because we're getting close to time. Thank you again very much for all of you guys coming down and sitting at the table with us.
Absolutely.
Just in terms of housekeeping on that one issue, we are looking for direction from the council on accepting the recommendations from the first ad hoc and sending it to the second ad hoc committee, which is that we already have an ad hoc finance committee, which is Mayor Murphy and Mayor Protem Edgar who just came in. And so we, the recommendation is for the council to accept the ad hoc and send it on to the finance.
You want that done here?
That would be appropriate.
I'll make, I'll make a motion then that we accept it.
And I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Pass. Very good.
And so we will work with your team, do we, our staff, it's mainly, it's Stephen Mendoza, it's Corey and myself, working with you and we'll...
We'll identify some PLCs. Colonel Range and myself will get you some information on at least a starting group.
Okay. And then we'll talk about, in terms of the pool, we'll talk about what you're, you're going to take it back and look at it and come back to us and then we can communicate that back to the city council.
Sure. On the, on the seventh of April, we're having, it's internal, we're getting the results of a review of all of our support agreements. And we'll be going through that step by step with US Army Corps of Engineers and our USPFO. I suggest that after that, probably the week thereafter at the earliest...
Maybe.
Maybe a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. That's when we set a time to meet again to discuss whatever, whatever it is we're...
So we're talking about late April or early May? I want to certainly thank all of you for coming down here today, opening and keeping open the lines of communication. It's been a long, great partnership with the base and hopefully we can keep it going.
Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I don't know if you're aware, the city of Los Alamos is about four square miles. We have roughly 11,500 residents. Two of those square miles is a Joint Forces Training Base. So the commander...
Yeah, we're a big piece of it.
The commander of the base is the mayor Protem over there for us, so.
I'll need any more work.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also thank you for the opportunity to come, to listen, to discuss and certainly express our concerns and to work together, to set a tone for how we're going to try to work together.
I agree.
Thank you very much.